Meeting to order today is July 24th and it is 4:33 PM. All older persons are present except for older person Katana and Mr. Kellogg, and they are excused. Moving to the first item is consider request from older person Bemke to rescind the action of the council on July 21st, 2020 wherein the council restricted access to the Wisconsin Rapids Aquatic Center effective July 25th by limiting access to only city residents and those non-residents who had purchased season passes by July 21st, as well as residents, as well to residents of municipalities who have partnered with the city and have contributed towards the aquatic center. Mr. Bemke?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess with that, I would like to make a motion to rescind the action of the council regarding the geo restrictions of the aquatic center. We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Zerflue. I guess just to let you know how this would proceed, so if you vote to rescind, that means on July 21st, the action you took would be voided, but the previous restrictions that were in place would be in effect. If you, if you, you also have the opportunity to vote, if you vote in favor of it, you can make another motion if you wanted to do something different. And if you choose not to rescind, then the action on July 21st would stand. I'm sorry, thank you, 25th. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Coath?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I was the most vocal on Tuesday night, and that's the reason we're all here today. So I know what I said Tuesday night, and I stand by those remarks. But for everything, every time you think you're doing something that is the right decision to help the taxpayers of your community, you find out that your good intentions had unintended consequences. One thing I found out very clearly over the last couple of days is that this had a direct, had negative impact on our staff that works at the aquatics facility. And on that note, I would like to publicly apologize to every employee that works at the aquatic facility and more particularly Ms. Don DeSorci and Ms. Mary Wlosik. I am sorry for not taking into consideration the actions that what we did at council would directly have on you at the facility. For that, I am deeply sorry. The intent of the motion and the reason I voted the way I did is because during this pandemic, our city residents have no other, they have limited options of where to go during this time. There's other municipalities that have not opened up their pools at all this season, other municipalities that if they do open up, they have geo restrictions on their pool. So if our pool's full and we're churning away residents, they don't have a lot of options to go. They, you know, they go to the lake, it may or may not be open due to E. coli concerns. And I sure hate to look at a city resident and tell them to go swim in the lake with the zebra mussels and E. coli when they just took and built the pool. But given the fact of the complications that this caused for staff, I would, as much as it pains me to think about taking care of the taxpayers and putting the taxpayers first and putting the best interest of the city residents first, I also have to take into consideration by letting the action stand, the impact that it has on our employees at who give up their time to work at the aquacs facility and frankly count on their hours at the current staffing levels, which Mr. Terry indicates if we don't rescind, we would have a reduction in staffing hours or reduction in people coming in, which would result in people being sent home early. And I don't want to hurt people that were planning on that income as summer income either. So I'm okay with voting in favor to this, taking it back the way it was before. I don't think muddying the waters with anything else and making it over complicated would be reasonable to do at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coath. Mr. Alm?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I know there's another item after this, but I guess is there any feeling to do any, if this is rescinded, to do not what we did, but to do something different other than going exactly back to how we were?
Tom, I talked to Joe about this a couple of times this week, and we just, I think if we do anything else, we're, we're just gonna possibly run into problems like if we could say go up to 350, and then the last 50 spots are held for city residents only. Well, okay, we hold those city spot, or we hold those spots out for city residents, but we don't have 50 that show up, but we could have 50 from non-residents that show up or churning away that revenue to the pool then as well. I saw that Joe gave us a item here that says we could talk with the health department about increasing the capacity to 450, but again, with the COVID concerns, I'm not sure if that's route we'd want to go either. So all indications are if there's a wait time, it's to be expected, and that's just part of having a new facility, and I don't want to do something to over complicate things again.
Well, I, uh, did Jay have something?
I guess it's me or Joel, it doesn't matter to me. I got my, you're back on your game, aren't you? I, I think, I think it is mentioned in here, the possibility of increasing the, the numbers that we let into the pool, but it's based on the recommendation of the health department, and I think Joel will probably speak to this in a minute if, assuming this gets rescinded. But other than that, bumping the numbers up a few, I think we leave it as we have it. Thank you.
Was that everything, Mr. Alm?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Veneman?
Yes, um, so the recommendation from the health department was a 50%? Joe?
Yeah, so what we did is we ran by a number, we, we, we made the suggestion that we reduce it from 822 to 400.
Okay.
And, and Mary had that conversation directly with them, I wasn't involved in that conversation, so I don't have exact firsthand knowledge of, of the discussion that ensued, but my understanding was that that's what was presented, and, and the health department felt that that was a responsible, you know, responsible suggestion. So I have a message into the health department right now, and, and do plan on talking to them, and just trying to get an idea if, you know, I've been participating in the weekly health department updates on COVID, and, you know, intend to meet with them and see if, if what their opinions are, if we would potentially go from 400 to 450, for example, and, you know, and just have that conversation and, and see what their thoughts are. I think a few of you have been to the pool when it's at its current capacity of 400, and at least my observation is it doesn't really look like there's that many people there. And, and that's not really what I had expected, and I guess part of that's that I'm, I'm not used to working at a facility that has four or 800 people there and, and understanding what that really looks like. But there's a lot more space at the facility than what I expected to see, and, and that's why I wanted to engage with the county health department and, and get their perspectives, you know, and I guess the one thing I was gonna ask if this does get rescinded and move forward is potentially some, some support that if the county felt that that's something that we could do, that the common council would allow us to make that adjustment, but we'll, we'll get to that at a later time if it's appropriate.
Let's, so capacity actually is 822, correct?
That's correct, yep.
I guess we round down from 411 to 400, or we ran, round up from 400 to 450?
Right.
If we want to talk 450, so it doesn't seem like 450 is that much more than 50% to me. The other thing is, is that we, when we made this vote, and I did vote to limit it only to Wisconsin Rapids residents, and when we made this vote, we really didn't have a very accurate number of how many non-residents were using the pool, as we sort of have that at this point, correct? Do we have?
Well, sort of. This, what I've prepared is based on two weeks of information, and it really hasn't been audited, so it's the best that we have right now. This is not typically the type of report that I would stand on the soapbox and, and give, but given the situation, I thought, well, I'll give you the best information that we have, as limited as it is, and, and we can go through some of those numbers. And again, I, I'm not gonna claim that this is exact, but it's, it's the best I could do at this, at this time.
But before we make this vote, I know we talked about discussing it after we make the vote, but it has to do with whether, which way I'm gonna vote, of course. And so my question would be, just estimated, asking this to Joe, if we limited it to Wisconsin Rapids residents based on what we've had for the first couple of weeks, we would lose significant amount of revenue, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I'm estimating about 36% revenue that we would lose, and, and, you know, I had anticipated that we should be trying to bring in about $33,000 in, in the past few weeks, and, and we've brought in about $29,000, so we're not too far off, but if you take that number and reduce it another 36%, extrapolate that out for the rest of the summer, and, you know, that, that puts us, what, close to $80,000, somewhere in there, short at the end of the season, that, that revenue that we didn't have to offset expenses that we're gonna have.
Yeah, but with that in mind, I guess that with, when both Mr. Coath and myself and others, when Mr. Coath was talking in terms of protecting taxpayers, and in fact, this possibly may be a detriment to the taxpayers, as we're continuing to, if we limit it to non-residents, we're gonna lose the revenue, so it does change the little way that you have to look at that vote. So if we are gonna vote to rescind it, I would probably vote to rescind it at this point, but for further discussion after. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else they'd like to add on the motion to rescind? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried six As, zero NAs. So now the question is if, if you want to leave things as they were previous to Tuesday's council meeting, so basically we're back at where, what the geo restrictions were prior to that, if that's where we want to leave it at, we don't need to do anything further. But if you wanted to have a further discussion and make another motion to change that, we can do that. Mr. Zerflue?
So from now until the next full council meeting, the mayor does have the administrative authority to make such changes, and I'm confident and comfortable in following the advice of the health department. I just don't think, as we all talked about, I, I don't think what the intention of the motion on Tuesday was, I don't think it's really feasible to accomplish. I don't think, I just don't think we can do it without running the risk of, you know, we were already letting less than half the amount of people in there. I mean, I'm comfortable following the health department and every month evaluating whether or not we want to continue with the emergency declaration and just letting the mayor make changes to be vetted, I guess, so to speak, by the next full council meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Bemke?
So I guess Mr. Terry kind of addressed it a little bit. I would be open to the fact that we could increase this by 50 with the consent or blessing of the health department, and I would be more than comfortable holding it where we're at right now, if we, if we get the go-ahead from the health department, allowing staff just to make that recommendation and move on with it, should alleviate some of the lines and keep things moving. I, I mean, we, we all understand, nobody wants to wait in line, we know who's paying for this, but I, I don't think we really know what the cost is gonna be if we eliminate this with a half-full pool, so that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
So do we need to do that in a motion, or do you want me to do it under my executive, or my emergency declaration?
Is okay to jump in?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Alm's got on his button.
I would question if that fell under the emergency declaration, adding numbers or subtracting numbers, I would question that. The emergency declaration would be to eliminate or to shut down. The 400's been, is the number, and I guess if that's what it's gonna be, I just have a couple of other things to say, I don't have, we did a, a letter put on our desk here this eve, this evening from somebody that I do believe should be to Rapids residents only, actually had two calls today, and I usually don't get too many, but had two calls today that said it should have been, that should just be restricted to Rapids residents. Then, I guess Facebook and that's been going wild again too, so, which you don't have to say who you are, so I don't put much faith in it. But again, it's been brought up, and I understand that they're out of the county, but again is that one of the communities that has been left out is a big player within the school district, the Tona Grant. So with that, I, I just throw in, would there be any interest in including that grant? And, and also that, you know, what headache it'd be if we restrict, at 350 was a cutoff or something that, and then Rapids people wouldn't wait, actually, one of the people that called me today, and I don't know, I wasn't there, I have to take what they told me, that they had to wait 45 minutes, I don't know, a Rapids resident. So the other option, another option which I've mentioned a couple of times, is that we split this into shifts, and that would give a lot more people a chance to use it, four-hour shifts or whatever. Communities are doing that, as far as I know, it's working. In fact, I didn't, I've been told that communities that you can do it online and you register a day before for which shift you want to use. So there are all, there are alternatives in which I think could satisfy everybody without creating a wait line. And that doesn't mean if you were there for one shift, you couldn't go back for the second shift, but it'd be on a fir, somebody else would be able to reserve it first before you did the second time. So I, I, I'll, I'll stay, can stay with the 400, and I, from, from my recollection is that at the point in time, I think, the 400 was, was, at least as I took it, was somewhat at the top end of what the health department was gonna go. That may have changed, I don't know. So it's, I think that this evening, whatever we end up with, that I would, I would be satisfied that we stay with the 400, and I guess to me, it'd be if we want to do anything that, one would be, does anybody have interest in including the Tona Grant, which adds more outside of the city people? I don't know how many. And the other is that if it was capped at 350 or whatever, that, then it'd be just, that last 50 would just be city people. So I don't know if there's any interest in looking at anything like that. I know there's a count of people as they come in and go and leave, but obviously people checking people in, somebody could slide by and somebody doesn't see them leave. Maybe we'll come up with a different way to do it, when you walk in, that'll, something will read as you go in and leave us, or read it as people leaving that, so, so it won't have to be handcounting it, not just for this year but next year. But the other thing, I guess, what gets me with the Facebook and that that goes on is that, uh, people are throwing out there that this is what it's gonna be forever. This is what the game plan is next year. This is not just COVID-related. So that's what the foolishness of Facebook and that does. And then they get people on there saying, yes, it is, that's true. Well, that's not the intent. I guess if anybody listened to it, the whole intent of all of this is that it's be a regional facility. Anybody can come from anywhere, California if they want to. So that's why things spread like wildfire. And I guess, I guess, I just, I just wonder if there's any interest in doing anything other than, I can live with 400, but is there any interest in a cutoff that if it gets to 350, 360, whatever, that then it'd be just Rapids people? And if there's no interest in that, like, like I said, I, I can live with that too. That would still allow, instead of as big a reduction that would be possible, by eliminating it just to Rapids people, that more people would be able to use it up close to what the capacity is of the 400. So just some thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Zerflue?
I guess to answer your question, Tom, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I think, I think there just might be administrative concerns, and I think that was, that was the sticking point. Also, and just from my recollection, was it a council decision, was it a council vote that we capped it at 400? Is that why, like, I guess staff and the mayor couldn't change that, you know, either increase or subtract the amount of people based on a health department recommendation?
So, so the council vote was to approve the recommendation of staff, and the staff's recommendation was based on the, the discussion that we had had with the health department at that time. So when we, like I said, when we talked to the health department, I don't believe we were talking about a range, we, we proposed a, a plan, and they thought that plan was a pretty responsible, responsible plan. So it, it was approved by council, and, and, you know, if, I've prepared just a short statement here to go through, but there are some challenges I had mentioned on Tuesday, you know, suggested maybe 350 with, you know, 50, 50 left, and when I met with staff to discuss that, I guess I didn't realize some of the logistical challenges with that. Similarly, with changing the, changing the, the geo-restricted area, we did spend a good part of a couple of weeks to, to get our computer system so that, so that we're set up the way we are, and that did require some IT staff and our, our GIS specialist. That person's on vacation right now, so it would take us a little time if we were gonna make some changes. And I guess part of the challenge is with the staff that we have, and the geo-restrictions that we have, and the questions that they get from the public, it, it's, it's worked for them, and it puts them under a bit of stress at times, and, and my preference at this time is, you know, we've, we've been operating for two, almost, almost three weeks now, two and a half weeks. I'd like to try to stay as relatively as consistent as possible so that the message, because we do have different staff members that work that admissions counter, we've got several different head guards. When we've started to have a little bit of mixed messaging, sometimes the messaging within our staff group, because, you know, it's, it's students that are, that are over there, sometimes that message isn't delivered consistently. You know, our perspective, my perspective is, I think for the, you know, for the operation of the facility, we should try to do the best we can to keep it as consistent as possible so the messaging stays the same, and, and at the end of the season, we also have a good reference, a solid reference if we're, you know, if we're open for 10 weeks, nine weeks, that we can sit down, analyze the season, and then discuss what, what changes to operations might be appropriate, what's possible. I do think that it would be possible to break the day up into a morning and an afternoon, but again, that may, that may prove challenging for some residents that, you know, are looking to come more in the middle of the day. But, but to facilitate that, that's probably the, the best option, the easiest thing for us to facilitate would be if, if there was a desire to do a morning and an afternoon, what we, what would be prohibitive for us to facilitate at this time is a reservation-type activity where people would call in and, you know, you try to get a headcount ahead of time. We're just, we're just not set up for that, and we just don't have the staff right now to, to make something like that happen in a relatively short time.
Also, the Tona Grant situation, I don't know how many of you communicated with a couple of people from there, but I did as well, and I, was that something coming from the health department to cut it off? My personal feeling is, I mean, school as of right now, last I heard, is they're planning on going, there's gonna be like a Monday, Tuesday class, and then a Thursday, Friday class, and obviously Grant is in our school district, so if it's a matter of, I guess, geographic, a geo-restruction on the, for the purpose of like, you know, COVID-19, I think the argument is, is legitimate that they are gonna all be in school together. I mean, I would be amenable to allowing that, but also I understand is that just one other thing that's gonna complicate things right now. I'm, I'm gonna turn the mic off here, and I won't take any more time, other than just saying, obviously, this is a very difficult decision to make, and even coming up with a plan is extremely difficult, because these are unprecedented times, and I don't know if we should possibly consider like an ad hoc committee kind of thing, or, or whatever, but that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Veneman?
Yeah, Mr. Alm, I agree with Lou, much what you said, in fact, the idea of the splitting the shifts would be, is a possibility, but my problem with that is that it's totally unfair to people that have purchased season passes, that expect it to be able to use it whenever they want it. And so that, I was something I wouldn't be in favor of. Joe, do we have a number of, of people that have purchased season passes, the total number? Not otherwise, or?
I, I don't have it at my fingertips. I think Mary might have gotten something to you, Mayor. I, I'm not sure.
Well, did they start with one? Did they start with the number one?
I can't even be sure of that.
No?
Because, because the, the software, I, I believe so, I believe.
Cause mine's 360, and I bought it about two weeks ago.
Okay.
So, or about a week, or about a week and a half ago, yeah.
Sure.
So, so it seems like a fair amount of season passes, so to change the rules, to me, would be unfair to those that invested that in the pool. But to me, it still seems like 450 is a legitimate idea, and it, so the, I understand, as you said, that's not a, that's not a executive order type thing, because that would be to shut down, so that would be something that would be a motion, so I don't know if there's any more discussion, but at this point, I'd like to make a motion to, oh, I'm sorry.
You can make.
I can wait till the other discussion.
You can make a motion too, if you want.
Okay. Well, I'd move at this point to eliminate it to 450, in leaving the, the locations that were previously in, in place.
So we have a motion by Mr. Veneman to increase the number to 450 for a capacity, and also leaving the geo-restriction previously in place, in place. Is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Kubashak. So, Mr. Bemke, you're up next.
Okay, so I did text while we were sitting here, a member of the pool staff, he said at times there were lines today, at 2:00 PM, there were 361 people at the pool. I guess the only thing is, I would be more than happy to support what Dean's motion, based on the
the only thing is, I would be more than happy to support what Dean's motion, based on the information that we get back from the Health Department, and give staff the flexibility to make that decision, not, not the mayor necessarily, but staff. And I'm just curious if staff, as we have Joe here and Paul, if they have any recommendations or see anything we'd like to add or subtract.
No, I don't have anything else to add. I did get a quick note from staff that's watching this online. Looks like we've got about 460 season passes currently sold.
I don't mean to take out a turn, but I would amend that motion based on the Health Department, if they had any recommendations to change that, based on the blessing of the Health Department, I guess.
Are you good with that, Mr. Kubitschak? Anything further, Mr. Bemke?
Yeah, quickly I do. I would just like to publicly say thank you to the staff for the hard work that they've put in, and how successful this has been up until now, and we really do appreciate it. So thank you. And thank you to Shane and Jennifer for throwing this together this afternoon on short notice. So thank you again.
Mr. Coath?
Just my opinion on some of the recommendations that have been talked about here this evening. We're in this situation of having geo-restrictions because of COVID-19. And I'm concerned about the slippery slope effect that happens. Like, now we're at 400, we want to increase it to 450. Well, now we find out that we're filling up at 450. Are we going to be in a position to explore 500, and then 525, and so on and so forth? I don't, in COVID-19, regardless what you think about it, the numbers are going up. I believe one day this week, Wisconsin had a single number increase of 1,117 new cases. The news station I listened to didn't have any information for Wood or Portage County, but 22 active cases in Marathon County. So even, even at that, I wouldn't see the Health Department necessarily greenlighting us to increase capacity at this time. In fact, I, I think the recommendation the Health Department, based on what's going on, would be to reduce capacity at this time. Which brings me to the next point, is adding another player into the geo-restrictions, the town of Grant. It's sad and unfortunate that, yes, they are a part of the Wisconsin Rapids public school system, but we've had to draw a line somewhere. And regretfully, those lines were drawn by the city and its neighbors in what is adjacent to us. And referencing the slippery slope again is, well, now if we let the town of Grant in, I mean, should we let Dexterville in? And if we let Dexterville in, should we let Pittsville in? You know, and again, referencing the previous remarks, COVID's going up, not going down. So the more we let in, if we're told to decrease, the more it's going to put the squeeze on city residents. And just, just to speak to communications from other municipalities quickly and say it, yeah, I've gotten the phone calls from adjacent municipalities and been threatened to about, I shop in Wisconsin Rapids, I buy stuff in Wisconsin Rapids. Based on the action of your city council, I'm not going to do business in Wisconsin Rapids anymore. Well, I work in Stevens Point, and I sometimes have lunch in Stevens Point, and buy gas in Stevens Point. That doesn't give me the right to tell the citizens of Stevens Point how they're going to do business. And I don't appreciate adjacent municipalities calling us and threatening us and telling us how we're going to do business for our taxpayers. I mean, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Coath. Mr. Elm?
Thank you, Senator. Yeah, and Steve, I agree with, with that. And I just, I threw out the thing with Grant, because that was another reminder today of that. And I don't think we actually addressed, maybe we did, but I don't remember that we addressed them specifically before. But so, and to leave it as is, I don't have a problem with it. So I just threw it out for, if there was any consideration. But I guess really, realistically, I would rather stick with the 400 that we're at. I also agree with Steve that with cases going up and that, that I would find it difficult for the Health Department to go along with increasing it. And I, from my standpoint, from where I was on voting to open this at all, that I would, that it is open, that we stay with the 400 and see what happens. So cases are going up, they're going up, you know, around us. And that, in the next, the next several weeks, I'm afraid are going to be a big telling point of where we're at. And when I say several weeks, I mean until about the middle of September. Hopefully, we don't become like a few other states are, and that, with that increase like that. But somewhat, even though the aquatic center is full of water, I don't want to play with fire either. And even though chlorine and outside and that, what people say, we have a president that said, drink it. Life's all, so. I would just, I'll stay with the 400 as we, as we had it. Realistically, I don't know what the closing date is looked at, because I don't know for sure when the kids are, I don't know if they're going to be going back to college or what anyway, or high school. So a month is probably the longest that we even would anticipate being open. And I don't know if we'd, if we've even looking at that, if it was normal times, because we'd be losing staff. So it's, I, I'll, I could stay with the 400, and we'll just play it by ear. And, you know, hopefully, wait lines, if there are, aren't too long. And obviously, when we, hopefully, next year, hopefully, that we are, it can be wide open, and 822, hopefully, we're dealing with a question of maximum capacity, and what do we do then? So, so that's something we can talk about over the winter time as things goes on, of what we do. So time to plan. But COVID came and snuck up on us, and we didn't know what was going to happen. We opened late, later than we probably wanted to, but we, that's when we quit anyway, I guess, because of what, finishing up with the pool and that. But hopefully, next year, it can open sooner, a longer season, and everything. But I would just as soon stay with the 400.
Thank you. I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Veneman, but the motion is to increase it to 450, but that's contingent upon the Health Department approving it?
Correct.
So technically, it is at 400. If the Health Department is approving going to 450, that would be okay in the motion with the current geo-restrictions.
That's correct.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else? Oh, Mr. Zerflu?
I know, I said I wasn't gonna. Do we even really need to make this motion, though, if it's contingent upon the Health Department anyway? It just seems that we're putting the cart before the horse. And I, I don't know that we're prepared to make any changes right now. It's just the way I feel.
Okay. So I guess, we'll go back to, still, the motion is to approve increasing it to 450 upon approval of the Health Department.
But, but it was based on the city's recommendations from the Health Department?
Correct.
Your, the original 400 was based on your discussions with the Health Department. You said, you had mentioned there's a possibility of 450. So is that something we would bring up to them, then?
Yeah, and I have made that call, and, and I'm waiting for a call back, just to have that conversation, to see, and see what, what the Health Department's position is. And again, I think the lines that we've been seeing, and that could change, right? I mean, more people might be interested in using the pool, but the lines that we're seeing, that extra 50, would really resolve the concerns that people have had about waits. And, and so, that was a suggestion that Paul Ballard had, and I thought it was a great suggestion to at least explore and see if, you know, based on the amount of space that we have there, we have that discussion, and if there's consensus that, you know, that, that still looks like a pretty good number, given the space that we have. You know, I think it's worth entertaining that as a, as a possible, you know, compromise or solution to this, you know, the reason why we started talking about it in the first place. But at the same time, if, you know, if we sit down with the Health Department, and there's some hesitation, because in fact, you know, the active cases in Wood County, while they're down this week, they're up from what they were a couple weeks ago. And they don't, they don't think it'd be a good idea, well, then, you know, we would, I'd be following the recommendation of the Health Department anyway, and would agree, then it wouldn't be a good idea.
Then I'll leave the motion as it stands.
Sounds good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Ty?
So based on the motion of leaving it at 400, and the ability to increase it to 450, if the Health Department is good with that, I'm comfortable with that, and I'm going to vote in favor of the motion. So motion carried four As, three Nays. Seeing nothing else, last item on the agenda is adjournment. So we have a motion by Kubitschak, seconded by Zerflu. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried five As, one Nay. Thank you very much.